I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the February 10th County Commission meeting. I remind you to silence your cell phones, that the meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. We've got too many Bs up here. And that Robert has listening devices if you need assistance. Commissioner Kelly has an award to present this morning.
We also got a lot of Sundays.
Yeah. Yeah, we do.
This past week, our sheriff's office got a quite prestigious award from the employer, employer support of Guard and Reserve. It's called the Proportria, is that right? Proportria Award, and it's given to one employer in the state for their support of the Air National Guard troops. It's presented on behalf of the men and women of America's reserves forces for outstanding service to the national defense through the continuing support of National Guard and Reserve. The sheriff's office was nominated by Corporal Nathan Abeslo at the jail. Would you like to give just why we got it? Or do you mind me? I don't know that much about it, but it's just a reward, it's just a award right here. Like I said, there's only one given out each year in the state of South Dakota.
In general, the support I got from the jail while I was gone was outstanding. I mean, even from the shift level all the way up. Starting with the shift, my supervisor at the time put care packages together for me regularly. I got emails consistently from everybody, and not even just my shift. It was from everybody in the jail keeping in contact. And then, I think the best part that, or part of the nomination was when they had an opening for the corporal position, I applied for it from Afghanistan and was selected for it. And I thought that was outstanding because at the time, I'd already been gone for seven months, I think, and possibly five to six more before I made it back to work. And I was still selected. And I think that says a lot about the sheriff and the county as a whole, which is why I thought they qualified for that award. I'm happy they won. I think they're happy they won.
Thank you.
They're good people to work for.
And come and get it. I think, you know, it's a tribute to the sheriff's office on how we handled when these, we had a lot of people in the county getting deployed. So congratulations to the sheriff's office.
I would like to say thank you to the corporal, not only for serving Minnehaha County, but also for serving our nation. Thank you very much. Okay. Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Are there any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of February 3rd, 2015.
Is there a motion on the minutes?
Move for approval.
Motion and a second. Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $393,811.11.
Pay the bills.
A motion and a second on the bills. Any comments? Commissioner Barth?
Today's bills include payments to Garretson and Dell Rapids ambulance of $25,000 each. We also had $42,000 going to Southeast Behavior Health, which is part of our annual gift to them. We had 41 bills for mental illness, including 15 of them at $626 each, which is almost $10,000. But there are another 36 bills that were lesser amounts.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. Any other comments? I have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. The Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department report for January 2015 and the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for January 2014 have been received and they are placed in file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Is there a motion to approve routine actions?
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions for Carrie? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B is a briefing on proposed updates to the Minnehaha County information technology email and Internet appropriate use policy.
Good morning. Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. Last fall, I received a call from Lincoln County's IT department. They were looking at developing an IT policy and were looking to us for guidance and assistance for two reasons. First, because we provide support, of course, to Lincoln County on the HR side, but also because we have a good relationship between the two IT departments. Madi Wadambat from Minnehaha County and Jacob Oakland from Lincoln County sat down along with Julian and myself to talk about the policy. And we were looking to craft one policy that would work well for both organizations. The policy that you have in front of you is the results of that effort and the review by the department heads and Kirsten Katmeyer. In essence, there's been little substantive changes to the policy. Previously, Minnehaha County had a policy or procedure that we'd review with new employees and then one that we had in our handbook. It was a great opportunity for us, honestly, to look at the language, consolidate it and clean it up. So the language in front of you, it's consolidated. It does provide more examples of prohibited use than the previous policy did. And it does clarify that any type of monitoring of IT resources can only be done with the approval of the person with legal supervisor authority. That's been part of the policy, but we wanted to really clarify that it was the legal supervisor of the individual. After sending it out, we also received some recommendations for changes from Commissioner Bender, and I thank you for those. So what we'd like to do is maybe take a week or two to go ahead, review those, coordinate again with Lincoln County. There's a couple of additional changes, maybe on the prohibited use, that we think would be good to add, as well as looking at maybe some language on preservation of electronic resources. So instead of bringing it back next week for your consideration to approve, I'd plan on doing that maybe within the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Any questions for Carrie? All right. Thank you, Carrie.
Okay. Thank you.
There are no application for abatement today. The next item are notice and requests. Item A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for MC 119-121-127-MS-15, microsurfacing of approximately 10 and 1/2 miles of County Highway 121 from Highway 114 to Highway 122 and Highway 127 from Dell Rapids to city limits to the Moody County line. D.J. Boothey.
Good morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Before you today is this request for a microsurfacing notice to bidders. The microsurfacing project is a project, this will be in its third year that we've done it. We've done it two years prior to this, the first year being sort of a pilot project, and it was pretty successful. So we did a full-scale project last year, and that was also successful. And so this year, we would like to do 10 and 1/2 miles of the microsurfacing project. Maybe for Commissioner Bender's help, we have, I can give a little bit of a background of microsurfacing in general, just briefly here. On the board over there, the graph that shows the curve is what a typical degradation curve might look like for a piece of pavement. And on the left-hand side there, you can see how it's a new piece of pavement with a pavement condition of 100%. And as the pavement ages, you can see how it degrades and the condition of the pavement goes down. And then ultimately, it will fail once it gets down maybe to 10 or 15 or 20% of its, the pavement condition index rating. We don't want that to happen to a brand-new piece of pavement, and so we will insert certain trigger points where we have different kinds of pavement treatments that we will do to it. What we typically do are crack sealing projects, chip sealing projects, microsurfacing projects, and overlay projects. We've looked at the idea of some other alternative types of projects, more of like a rehabilitation-type project, but we haven't gone into that quite yet. We have done some milling and overlaying as a combined project, and that has certainly helped with some of our more narrow roadways. So a microsurfacing project is identified when it reaches a certain condition rating and a condition rating that might not be as bad as a road that needs an overlay. And so that's how we identified the miles that are shown on this project here, the 10 and 1/2 miles there. They're worse than something that we would do a chip seal to, or we've done a chip seal to in maybe the last five to 10 years, but they're not as bad as something we would do an overlay to. And so I hope that brief description helps you understand why we chose these 10 miles and not a different 10 miles. We try to balance our budget a little bit where we have some money going towards a microsurfacing and some money going towards, towards an overlay project. The costs that we've seen in the last couple of years, our overlays cost about $120,000 to $140,000 per mile to complete, and our microsurfacing projects cost about $45,000 to complete. So the treatment is definitely a different kind of treatment, and that's why there's a significant cost difference. So we want to make sure we treat the right roads at the right time, and that's why we're not just doing overlays anymore. We're inserting projects like this, microsurfacing. So anybody have any questions about the microsurfacing project?
Any questions for D.J.?
Do you have any idea on yours? I mean, where are you when you do the microsurfacing, or you're 10 years out of a road, or does it make difference where, when and where it is?
We have tried to draft up a calendar, if you want to call it a calendar, of treatments for a typical road section. The problem that we have is we don't know exactly when a lot of our roads were initially constructed. And so once you do maybe a couple chip seals and then an overlay and then a couple more chip seals, the calendar changes, and so we have to look more at the pavement condition than a calendar. And moving forward, when we reconstruct a road, for example, we'll want to put it on a certain calendar where we know that we are going to do a chip seal at maybe five years, and then we're going to do another chip seal at 10 years, and we might do a microsurfacing at 15 years. Once you get farther into that calendar, the variability of those treatments changes a lot. And so without having a lot of background information on our current road system, it's hard to decide, or it's hard to know really exactly when something was constructed or when those treatments occurred. We have records going back for our overlay and chip seal program, I think 10 to 15 years, and that has helped us quite a bit in doing our selections, like for last year and this year, moving forward. But we don't have a full calendar of the treatments that have been completed on any of our road sections.
You don't have records going back, like, as I remember, as I remember, 6-mile road was built, was asphalt in the 90s, I think.
That one was, yeah. And so we do have that one small road section that was reconstructed.
But you don't, nothing else.
But not a lot. I mean, there's a few of them here and there that were relatively new, but the majority of our road network that was constructed decades ago, we don't have those records.
So where are you to a reconstruction normally? 25, 30 years out?
We're planning on a new pavement section that we might have a 40-year design life. And so with all the treatments that we put towards a road, that will last us about 40 years. And we have to balance that with other budget needs and things like that. It might end up being 50 years, and who knows? It might be 60 or 70 years. A lot of the roads that are paved right now on our road system were there for a lot longer than 40 years. Our road network was created in 1919 and built since then. A lot of our roads were built in the 1950s, along with the development of the interstate system and that kind of thing. So a road that was built in the 1950s might be 80 years old, and chances are, it wasn't reconstructed yet.
Thank you.
D.J., has the pavement management system that we put in place last year, has that assisted in making road decisions?
Very much so. And the second board there that shows the county map with the aerial photo on there, all the lines that are color-coded are road network, and they're color-coded based on the payment condition index from that survey. And so I was hoping after the meeting, if anybody is more interested, we can talk through some of those things. In general, the dark green lines are good condition, and then as they turn yellow, it's more of a moderate condition, and as they turn red, it's a poor condition.
Thank you. Any other questions for D.J. on item number A? I'd look for a motion then to authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders on some microsurfacing projects.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for MC 114-BR-14 for the replacement of Structure 50-289-060 located on Highway 114 approximately 4 miles west of Sherman. D.J.
Commissioners, this structure on Highway 114 on the east side of our county is on a county highway system, and it is both structurally deficient and functionally obsolete. The functionally obsolete portion comes from it having a narrower width than what is a design standard today. And that was one of the things that contributed to our decision to replace this structure as it's on our highway system that's used by a lot of trucks and things like that. We wanted to make it wider for those trucks to be able to pass through, the wide trucks. The ADT on this road was measured last year by our staff and is just over 500 average per day. And it does have a current load limit on the structure, and it is proposed to be replaced this year with a 54-foot structure. So if you have any more questions, I can answer them now.
Questions? Is there none? I would look for a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice to bidders for replacement of a structure near Sherman.
That's my motion.
A motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, D.J.
Thank you.
Item C, a notice from the South Dakota State Historical Society that the concrete interstate rest stop teepees at Salem eastbound and westbound, Wausau eastbound and westbound, Chamberlain, Spearfish, Valley City, Junction City, and New Effington have been placed on the National Register of Historic Places. There are no planning and zoning notices today, and there are no petition for compromise of lane. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is the time of the meeting if someone would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda. Is there no one? We'll move on. Regular business.
Item 10 is a public hearing to consider a resolution for the authorization for East River Electric Power Cooperative Incorporated to construct electric transmission and distribution lines on the public highways of Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the commission office. As you're aware, East River Electric has approached the commission office looking to update their franchise agreement with the county. There is a previous franchise agreement that the, that East River had with the county that has expired, and they are looking to update that franchise agreement. These franchise agreements are part of the process for utilities that do business in jurisdictions in the state and to have their equipment in right-of-way, so they are looking to update this, this agreement at this time through a resolution. We have had their, the information that they've presented to the offices has been reviewed by both the state's attorney's office and by the highway department. I know that they're, at least at some point early on, at least the highway department had some questions, and I understand they may, may want to share some of those concerns with you. Mr. Ron Golden is also here from East River Electric to answer any questions that you may have. And I would attempt to answer any questions you have for me, but I think between our different departments that have looked into this in greater detail and Mr. Golden, they probably are the individuals that will be able to give you most of the information that you're looking for.
Okay. Any questions for Robert? Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing, so we would speak to Mr. Golden if you would like, to the proponents of this authorization of East River Electric.
Good morning.
Good morning. Do you want to just give your name and address?
Yep, Ron Golden with East River Electric out of Madison, South Dakota. This is a requirement by state statute. Every 20 years, utilities are required to go through the counties and request for the right to occupy, cross over all county and township roads you're acting on. This is not circumvent or eliminate any requirements the county might have for crossing permits, right to occupy permits. We still have to go through this. This is just part of the permitting process that we have to go through to fulfill the requirement by the state statute.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Golden? Commissioner Barth?
Thanks for being here. So do you have a plan as to where you're going to go, or is this a blank check for every road in the county?
The way, the way the statute's written, we have to do this every 20 years. So we submit, and it's required to have a map of our system within the county and stored at the auditor's office. We presented that to the county with our petition for franchise, and it shows our existing lines as it is today. In 20 years, we'll update that and provide it for all the new roads. That's why in anything that we build from now, in the next 20 years, we have to do all the permitting and all the requirements there. But the statute, I'll be honest with you, I don't see the use of the statute, but it's a requirement that we have to do every 20 years. It's more of a notice to utilities, if you ask me, than the general public, so.
Commissioner Barth?
So you don't have any dramatic plans for changing at this point?
There's no schedule in the next, no dramatic improvements in this county, no.
Any other questions for Mr. Golden? Okay. And this is a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public, so is there anyone that is opposed to this permit?
Commissioners, D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. I hate to stand up as a, in opposition to this, but we do have a good relationship with, with East River and Mr. Golden. We've done many permits with them, and so my opposition is not with the agreement being completed. It is more so just recommended to delay or defer a week so we can update some of the language in the, in the agreement. Working with the state attorney's office this last week, we had a revision that we would like to add just regarding the necessity of obtaining a permit prior to any of the installation. And then also, when I was looking through it, I just noticed that the statute is referenced, that the statute, which is referenced in the agreement, it, Chapter 31-26 of the codified law, it is the 1984 revisions, and that chapter was most recently revised, I believe, in 2007. And so I think that it should probably be updated there, too. So just a couple revisions that I think that should be made to the agreement before it's executed. Any questions?
Commissioner Benega, I think that we need to defer to Kirsten on that, because I think we can change the one concern we had at the end. Is there any concern about the code of law? Because we could take care of this. We do have a deadline on this.
I did provide a legal briefing to the commission on this issue, and I echoed the concerns that D.J.'s bringing to you today and suggested some alternative language if you choose to enact the resolution. And I believe you all have a copy of that, and I would urge that if you do pass the resolution today, that you would strongly consider adding that language that I suggested. And I don't know if you want me to read that at this point, or if you want to do so on the resolution, if you choose to do it that way. Either way.
Madam Chair? It may be that Mr. Golden would like to hear it, too.
Yeah.
Sure. And that's fine. And I can do that.
It's not a big deal.
It's not a, it's not a dramatic change. Let's see if I have the original. Yep, thank you. In the, in the last paragraph on the proposed resolution that East River provided to you, I would propose that any resolution contain this alternative language. "Be and it hereby is granted to said East River Electric Co-op, Power Cooperative Incorporated Madison, South Dakota, subject to the terms and conditions of Chapter 31-26 of the South Dakota Codified Laws, comma, and all other related or applicable laws, regulations, and ordinances governing highways and rights of way, period."
Would that be added to nine?
That would be the last paragraph in the resolution, not the petition.
This one, right? Okay.
So, yeah. Yep.
Yep.
And that would eliminate the reference to the 1984. I don't think that was on purpose. I think that was just in the draft still, so.
Are there any other questions or concerns?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Highway Department has reviewed Kirsten's proposed language and does support that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barth?
I just want to clarify with Kirsten that in the event that utility, utilities need to be relocated due to a highway project, that that would be the utility that has to pay those costs?
That's what I would read in the laws and regulations.
Okay. Are there any other questions? This is, yep, Mr. Golden.
I don't want to get, excuse me. I don't want to confuse this with, I know what you're going for and I understand that. I don't think that's the intent. I agree with the language that was misinterpreted by my fault there, but adding additional verbiage to that agreement, I think, is not what the purpose of this resolution is or what the intent of the statute is. I'd strongly recommend that you go forward and approve this, and with the understanding that we do have to fulfill all the requirements beyond what the county highway superintendent may have for permitting for occupying and, and crossing over roads. I have the same language with the incorrect language with the wrong dates on there in 41 other counties, and I just don't know if I want to start adding additional language to a separate one that we might have problems in the future with, so I just wanted to add that comment to this. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Golden? Comments?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Golden, so if, if we are contemplating adding that language, would you like to have it reviewed by your attorneys?
It definitely would have to be reviewed by our staff, or council.
So defer all would probably be in order. Is that correct?
There's a timeline, too.
I know, that's just it.
There's a 10-day, you have to act on it within 10 days from the public hearing's date.
If we, if we pass it, Kirsten, then he can take it back and review it, can't they? Even if we pass it?
Certainly could.
Then if they accept it, it's done, and if they don't, they'd have to come back next week.
I mean, you, it's before you, what, language to put in your, in your past resolution? It's, it's your call as the commission.
I don't believe we would have any problems with the language and changing the dates that were incorrectly placed in there. I don't have a problem with that at all, and I don't think our staff would either. That's just.
Which portion, I guess, would they have a problem with?
If you could read over that to me.
Do you want to see my copy?
That would be.
And you can at least read it, instead of having read to you.
Yes, thank you.
It's that marked area.
Okay. And I'll have your assistance here. Conditions, I don't see an issue with this. I would be, I think if, like you said, I could take it back to him, and if there's any changes that he may wish to add to it, we'd have to come back and revisit it at that time. But I, he is right now, I'm here right now, so I'm able to get ahold of him, so I apologize. Otherwise, I'd get ahold of him right now and get an answer to you.
If you can give me your contact information, I'll send you maybe something rather than keep that sheet.
Yes.
Yeah, because I need the sheet.
Yep, I'll bring it back.
Yep.
Well, it appeared to me that we could act, and I mean, we're only one signature to this.
Well, if I may interrupt just a second. The franchise agreement is with individual counties. It's not like we all sign off.
On a big document.
On a big document. They are just separate and distinct, whichever county they're going to, so. And you have within.
Thank you.
And you have within 10 days to act upon it. So it really is within your, it's within your judgment whether to go forward today or defer it. So you can defer it one week and be within those, that 10-day period.
Madam Chair, it seems to me the logical thing to do is to wait a week since we still would be in that timeframe, and if this doesn't work, we would know by next Tuesday. So I guess I would make a motion to defer action for one week.
Is there a second to defer for one week? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to defer. Comments?
Well, I think, I think really it would be better to have a clean document next week, but it put pressure on us because we've got to act next week for sure. Is that correct?
That's correct. Well, unless you meet in a special session within the 10 days, then.
Well, I would urge that we defer it, making the parties can get together if there's even any words missing, a one or two words, where it could be done then before we adopt the whole thing.
Any other comments? Commissioner Benega? Commissioner Benega.
It doesn't seem to me that this is controversial. I mean, Mr. Golden just read through it and had no issues with it. I think that if we pass it today, we don't have to address it nor do they need to come back next week. If he has an issue with it, we certainly can hear from their attorney before that time and make that amendment, but I don't think that it is that big of a deal, frankly. I don't know that anybody's going to be confused with what the laws and regulations are.
Our reporter has a comment.
Speaking from the auditor's office, we have to publish the resolutions within the minutes that are published. So I would need a resolution to be published by our deadline of filing those minutes within the, up to the paper, so that's the only consideration. I would need the exact resolution with the wording in it that you guys are passing today.
Yep.
We want to add the language today.
Yeah, we've got it. So, all right.
We do want to add the language suggested by Kirsten.
Well, the motion for you to defer it currently.
Yep. Okay, I have a motion to defer.
I'll withdraw the motion.
I have a motion to withdraw the deferral? Is there a second to that? Do we have to second that?
I don't think it needs a second.
For a minute, it was your deferral, it was your motion.
Yeah, you're the second. It's your second.
Yeah.
Why don't you withdraw?
Jeff has to withdraw.
Let me have another drink. I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, motion withdrawn. Is there a motion to approve the resolution with the changes?
There is. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Kirsten will help you with the additional language that we have added to the end of the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Golden. And?
And the commission office, I believe, does have an editable proposal as well.
Okay, all right, we will move on. Thank you.
Item 11, consider a motion to approve preliminary plan for tracks 1 through 5 of Limer Edition, Section 7, Township 102 North, Range 50 West. Scott Anderson.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, County Planning Department. Today, we have a preliminary plan that is before you to consider for approval. This has gone to the Planning Commission. It was at the January meeting and it was approved unanimously. We have an applicant that's proposing to create five tracks of the Limer Edition and I'll go through the plan here for you. It's in the northeast quarter of Section 7 and it's about 160 acres. You can see it's the quarter section. It's right now all ag land, as you can see from the air photo, there are no structures. It's just being cultivated. Here's the preliminary plan, which shows the five lots and the property. I took a couple pictures. You can see it's just ag land. The Planning Commission recommended approval with three conditions and the applicant has met all of those conditions. They were minor, correcting some labeling and showing some contours and having a certificate on the preliminary plan for the Planning Commission to sign, which they have. The Planning Commission has signed the preliminary plan. So the applicant and the plat, now meet all the requirements of the preliminary, of our subdivision ordinance and I would ask that you approve this today and I would be glad to answer any questions you have.
Is there any questions for Scott? I have, oh, Commissioner Barth.
Scott, this is the one we discussed about the different tracks being because of a family decision, is this right?
It's an estate planning issue. They're in the process of plating these out so they can parcel them out among family members.
So there is an issue there where some of these lots will be too small to qualify as ag.
I saw that.
And the applicant has been made aware of that. There's four building eligibilities and I've worked with the applicant to identify where those building eligibilities are going to go. One, the two bottom tracks will each get one building eligibility and this parcel up here and this parcel here will get a building eligibility. This parcel will not have any building eligibility.
My question is that on that, Scott, because there's no reason to make them say where they're going to be because as long as the land is joining each other, they can move those building eligibilities anywhere they want. So why are you making them parcel it out?
I'm not making them parcel it out.
But I mean, as far as where you're making them assign building eligibilities?
The issue we run into is each, as you know, each quarter-quarter receives a building eligibility. So, for example, this parcel overlaps two quarter sections. So theoretically, the applicant could have two on this parcel and none on this parcel. So I worked with the applicant to decide, it's just an easier, it's a convenience to the applicant so they don't have to come back and go through a building eligibility transfer. And we have the same situation with, on the north half of the quarter-quarter section, which would be, you know, this parcel could have two and these could have none or, you know, there could be one on each one of these and that's what the applicant chose to do was one on, one here, one here, one here, and one here.
But my question is still the same. I guess it saves them permitting, but if they wanted to take one of those building eligibilities where we've assigned them, now they can still move them.
They could, yes.
They can move them and everything else.
At a later date, the applicant certainly could move, you know, both of these up here if they wanted to, but that would necessitate a conditional use permit because they are moving it from one quarter section to another quarter section. So right now, we just left them basically in each quarter section. The only thing we had to identify was in this quarter section, there was a possibility for an eligibility to be on either of these lots and the same thing with this parcel. There was an eligibility, there was a possibility for one or two eligibilities to be placed on this lot. So I just worked with the applicant to, you know, better identify where they wanted them to save them some bookkeeping paperwork issue down the line if they wanted. But you're right, they certainly could, at a later date, move those all around wherever they wanted.
Okay, all right, that was my question. Commissioner Kelly.
What concerns me is the lack of an eligibility on what, the seven acre lot?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what, how the setup is, but whoever stands to inherit that, what are they going to do with seven acres? You know, I wonder if they won't be back saying, well, I'd like an eligibility and we get into that argument, which we've had many times before.
Yeah. I was just going to comment that we have had this discussion before and this, most recently, back in December, east of Brandon, we had the exact same situation. And, you know, it, what we have to look at is the proposed subdivision plan meets our subdivision ordinance and we, I have made it perfectly clear, as clear as I can through the staff report, that there is no eligibility on this parcel. So, and the applicant knows that, the property owner knows that and they want to move ahead with it, so should they want to get a building eligibility at a later time, they will be told, no, there is not one for that parcel. And they may want to come back and try and rezone it.
It's easier said than done because, you know, when it really happens and none of us might be here at the time, you're back into the same old problem. I kind of agree with Cindy. I don't know why we're addressing the eligibilities. There's four in the quarter and, you know, if they want to, through the estate planning, specify, but I don't know that we should. I don't have a problem with the prong otherwise because it helps them, but I just think.
For me, and I'll just try to clarify this one more time, when we have a lot split or when we're making, when we're creating lots like we're going to be here, mechanically, and I have to be able to go on our computer system and assign that building eligibility somewhere. I just can't leave it floating out there. So I have to be able to assign it somewhere and so I just work with the applicant to say, where do you want this building eligibility assigned? That still meets our zoning requirements of not transferring it. It's still within that same quarter-quarter section. So I did have to ascertain and assess where he wanted each quarter-quarter section building eligibility be located.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Scott? I would look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nerd.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you. Thanks, Scott.
Item 12 is a motion to declare asset number 55360, a group of stools in the treasurer's office, as surplus for disposal at landfill. Pam Nelson.
Good morning. Apparently, in about 1997, they remodeled the treasurer's office and at that time, they purchased 12 stools to be at the windows. Well, they kept appearing on our capital assets list and they've been gone for a long time. I mean, they weren't there when I came in 2005, so I think it's appropriate that we ask for you to declare them assets or whatever they are.
The case of the missing stools.
So they can, they've already been, we always put them at the landfill. We set them out in the hall and then Lloyd takes them away.
And they disappear. Are there any questions for Pam?
I'll move that we remove them or declare a surplus and wherever they are, they're not ours anymore.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to declare assets number 55360 for surplus for disposable at the landfill. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Apparently, it's true. It's easy to get forgiveness, huh?
Yeah, I guess so.
We have, they said they've been gone for a really long time.
Yeah, we're going to make you go dig for them. Thanks.
I appreciate it.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2015 agreement between Minnehaw County and Volunteers of America Dakotas for non-secure juvenile detention. You're not Jamie.
Good morning, Lynn Krell from the Juvenile Detention Center. Jamie asked me to be here this morning. We've submitted a contract for your review and approval along with some additional information, but it's asking that we add two additional guaranteed beds at Volunteers of America for use and this would be added to the three guaranteed beds we already have. And so I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Lynn? This is just in keeping with our JDAI and trying to keep kids out of juvenile detention center and into shelter care where they need to be.
Make a motion to sign that agreement and I have a comment.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second with a comment from Commissioner Barth.
I just wonder if five is enough because clearly the non-secure is our greatest need these days and hopefully we'll continue to need more non-secure than secure.
Did you want to comment on the numbers?
Well, that is difficult to predict. You're correct. The last half of 2014, that was our average number, was five in those beds. On occasion, we did go over and we still have the ability to do that provided they have the space available.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
And isn't it, you know, when you, if you have too many that need to go to the non-secure, then you have to assess who's the, that somebody needs to go to the slammer, so to speak, and that, because there isn't enough room in the non-secure.
That can happen on occasion. Doesn't happen real often, but you're correct.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a motion and a second to authorize the chairman to sign the 2015 agreement between Minnehaw County and the Volunteers of America for JDC. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Lynn.
Item 14, consider a motion to authorize the purchase of two truck chassis from Nuss Truck of Minnesota in the amount of $236,516.42 from a contract competitively bid and awarded by the state of Minnesota. This item was deferred from February 3rd meeting. DJ Boothie.
Morning, Commissioners, DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. You were presented last week with the request to purchase trucks and the request to know as to bid for some truck bodies. At the time, you had requested some additional information and I have sent out some additional information. Just to recap briefly on some of that information, the county does have the purchasing policy for replacing vehicles and in it, it states that sedans, wagons, light trucks, SUVs, and passenger vans, when they reach eight years of service or 150,000 miles, whichever comes first, the department should consider replacing. And it goes on to say that specialized equipment such as heavy highway construction equipment may require the use of customized replacement guidelines. And so I think that was a comment that was made by Commissioner Benega, that we should look at the definition of trucks, light trucks versus heavy trucks. We're looking at purchasing some trucks, but those are not the pickups or the light trucks that are specifically addressed in the purchasing policy. We do use some information that we get from APWA, the American Public Works Association. It was originally developed by the city of Ames, Iowa, and it identifies replacement cycles for snowplow trucks or construction tandem axle trucks and that's what we base our information off of. The city of Ames and APWA recommend a 100,000 mile target and that is not feasible for us and we don't believe that that is necessarily prudent. We'd be going through trucks at a much higher rate. And so we have adjusted that to 175,000 miles. The city of Ames also said 15 years and what we find is because of our salt usage up here more than likely being higher than the city of Ames, we are going through trucks at a little bit higher rate than 15 years and so we've changed that to 10 years if we're able to. Financially, that has not fit into our replacement cycle and it's not being practiced at this time. We're more like 10, instead of 10, we're more like 12 to 15 years. And especially for the trucks like the 0523 truck that was modified to be a water truck, several of our trucks from our fleet will retire from snowplowing and move on to a different capacity, whether it's a certain kind of haul vehicle or the water truck. And then in that case, they're kept on longer than that, 12 to 15 years sometimes. I think 0523, oh yeah, it says right here, 0523 is 17 years old right now, so that is definitely beyond the 15-year mark. 0523 is the single vehicle that would be replaced with the approval of the purchase of these truck bodies and truck chassis. That's what the current plan would be if throughout the next six months or so, we have other issues come up with other vehicles, we would definitely look at that more closely. But as of today, 0523 would be the truck that would be removed from our fleet. That is currently being used as a water truck. It has 221,000 miles and is 17 years old. I received a question yesterday from one of the commissioners about hours on the vehicle and we don't track hours on our existing fleet. I'm told that some of the trucks that we have had in the past, they do have, or they did have hour meters on them, not the current ones, but some of the ones that we had in the past, and they averaged out about 3,000 hours per 100,000 miles, is what I'm told. So there's that information. The trucks that we are looking at are moving around in our fleet and replacing, the 0523 and the 0550, 0551, those trucks, the engines have never been overhauled. The engines of these vehicles seem to be in pretty good shape, from what I understand. It's more the body and the framing system underneath the chat, or the part of the chassis that is suffering from rust and wear from the chemicals that we use to treat our roadway. We do see on a, I guess, a somewhat regular basis, broken frames in our department and I think that that is probably more frequent in our department compared to maybe like a UPS truck because of the amount of salt that we put on our roads and those vehicles are subjected to salt a lot more frequently and at a lot higher rate than other vehicles that you might see out on the road. So they rust out and then their frames break. When their frames break, sometimes we're able to repair them and sometimes we're not. Just this year, we did have to surplus a vehicle after it was taken out of service due to a broken frame. Pages two and three of the memo that is serving as a cover letter to last week's memos do show some pictures from 0523, 0550, and 051. And basically, what we're trying to show in those pictures are just some of the conditions that we're looking at when we're making the decisions to prioritize these trucks for replacement. The 0523 shows rust all over the frame and the wheels and the exhaust, the hydraulic tank. And that, again, is the single truck that we would be removing from the fleet with this approval. 0550 is proposed to be kept as a spare truck and you can see that that has some rust on its frame already on both of those pictures. And then 0551 is proposed to be kept and converted to the water truck. That's, that decision was basically made by looking at 0550, 0551, which are two worst condition trucks today and saying that 0551 is in better condition than 0550. And so that could be converted to a water truck and serve for a longer period of time than the one that would be serving as a spare truck as a shorter period of time. So with that, this current request ultimately results in an expenditure or expenditures of maybe $400,000. of maybe $400,000 plus or minus for the 2015 budget. Those costs are budgeted. I think that that is a small percentage compared to the overall $7.1 million that we're spending on construction projects this summer. And the prioritization needs to be looked at very closely when we're looking at personnel, equipment, construction, and we can't just focus on one of those, or not focus on one of them. And so when we look at our equipment replacements, we can't just not replace equipment because we want to put another $400,000 towards construction, for example. And so with that, I request the approval of the action item today to purchase these trucks, or I can answer any questions about them specifically.
Questions for DJ? I have some. Commissioner Benega.
DJ, I agree with your issue, you can't look at just one particular budget item in the total budget, but yesterday, you sent us a copy of your supportive email that went out to the state of South Dakota for, I think it's Senate Bill 1, on funding of roads and highways, and you said that your budget is $4 million a year short in being able to meet your needs. In my mind, I'm still at the point where roads and bridges take a higher priority than equipment issues, and when I look at the pieces that you have highlighted in your pictures, the broken frame, I'm not an expert on, but frankly, in my previous life, when I was in college, and after college, we operated fleet trucks, and things like rusted wheels can be replaced, exhaust can be replaced, hydraulic tanks can be sandblasted. I think that we're gonna have to make some changes to the attitudes that we might have on what is more important to get finished. And to me, the most important part is obviously the safety of the roads and bridges that we have people driving on every day. If we had the financial support that we were hoping to get from the legislature, these would be things that we should consider strongly, but at this point, I'm having some questions, frankly, about what we can do with these vehicles, regardless of what the miles say, because you've already indicated that the engines seem to be in good working order, and to me, that is the strongest point of my discussion.
Any other questions or comments? I have a couple of them. I'm just, the question I was gonna ask last week that I totally forgot when I got halfway through it was, why would we buy the trucks before we've even accepted bids on the spreaders? Because we haven't, I mean, obviously, that's the next one on it, but that's only a notice to bidders, and we haven't accepted those bids yet, and what if they're so high, we say, we don't want these spreaders right now, and then we have trucks with no spreaders? So that was my question last week. But just to dovetail off of a couple of things that Commissioner Benega said, is that, you know, rusty wheel frames, those are 100 bucks a piece, it's a cheap maintenance upkeep. Hydraulic tanks, you can replace those, and I think that's a common thing that happens on trucks, even over-the-road trucks get rusty, hydraulic tanks, frames, I think, you know, a lot of people, and I don't know if we do this, but sandblast them and repaint them in order to protect them from salt every year. And I realize we have a lot of salt, but we have less hours on the road, and we carry more salt, but we have less on the road, less hours on the road than an over-the-road truck would have. Do we have, do we do the maintenance, as far as when we're done running a salt run, do we run it through the car wash? Car wash is a lot cheaper than replacing a truck to keep that salt off, keep those bodies clean. Just some thoughts, I, you know, I'm just not, I don't know that I'm ready to support two new trucks at half of a million, you know, $400,000, to replace the bridge that we talked about today, and I think waiting until, to see what the state appear, that's the state, the state does, in peer regarding our highway bill, may give us a better idea of where we should go forward with building trucks or building roads, particularly if we're thinking that we're gonna run short of funds ourselves. So.
Okay.
I have one more question, and that was, do any of these trucks that we're looking at, do any of these have broken frames?
I can address all of your questions, if you would like.
Yep, I will. I hammered you a bunch, and I noticed your writing.
That's all right, I wrote them down. First, Commissioner Benega, the $4 million funding gap that was mentioned in the email, that is a number that we look at to fully fund what we would have proposed for a construction season, for example, to do road reconstructions, bridges on the cycles that are recommended. And similar to our equipment replacements, we don't do the roads or the bridges on the cycle that is recommended, because we don't have the funding. And so if we had $4 million, it would be a perfect world, and we'd be able to replace everything on a appropriate cycle. And so that's how that number is looked at. Knowing that there are no departments out there that are fully funded, we look at prioritization of everything, whether it's equipment, or roads, or bridges. So that is just addressing that one. Why purchase the trucks when we haven't done the notice to bidders yet? The two go hand in hand. We do have to know what trucks we're purchasing to be able to advertise for the truck bodies, because there's so many custom things that come with the chassis, the length of the wheelbase, for example, is just one item that we have to look at. And so the reason that we can't buy a truck body off of another entity's bid is because it's all 100% customized, it's not something that you just go off the shelf and you pick one, and that will fit your truck, or that will work for your use. And so we have to know the chassis that the truck body will be going on to before we are able to design the truck body. And so we know both of them, there's a significant lead time for both of them, and so the purchase of the truck has to coincide with the purchase, or the notice to bidders, the purchase of the truck body, so it is available when the truck body is delivered, it can be a better timely, a more timely schedule. We're not waiting for months for the truck body to, or the truck chassis to arrive, once the truck body has been awarded.
And what if it isn't awarded? That was my point, if it wasn't, if we got the bids, and we didn't like the bids, and we didn't award it, then we've got two trucks sitting here that we can't do anything with.
Sure.
That was my point.
Yeah, and right now, it's about a year before we, when we initiate this process, until we get trucks on the road, if we decided that we would like to wait for those bids to come in and everything to be approved, you'd only be extending that year process maybe a few more months. And so as far as the car wash goes, our crews do a pretty good job of keeping their trucks clean. They, we don't have a car wash that we can drive through, but we do have a hose that we can spray our trucks down the best that we can. It doesn't do the best with the underbody part that we have the biggest rust problems with, but when we respond to a snow event, it might take a week or so for us to, once we bring out multiple times, it might be a week or so by the time that our guys have downtime in order to go clean their trucks. And we're certainly doing that whether, when the weather is allowing us to. So they wash their trucks as much as possible in the wintertime. The broken frames, I think, was the next question. I don't believe either one of these have a broken frame yet. These are being replaced more on the idea that they're rusting enough where it's not soon, or not gonna be long until we have a broken frame. And when those broken frames occur, we don't know if it's gonna be the kind of broken frame that we can repair, or that we have to just totally get rid of the vehicle. The frames that are on most of these vehicles that we own, and we're trying to get away from this, but there are sturdier frames that is constructed with multiple sheets of steel on top of each other, and those are horrible for this type of climate that we're in, because the chlorides from the salt get in between those gaps of the steel, and you can't wash them out, they just deteriorate the steel at a really high rate. So even with washing the vehicles, that even sometimes will insert water into the equation, allow the chlorides to get in there even better. And so the frames on these vehicles, I do believe, have those types of frames, and the frames on the vehicles that we're hoping, or the trucks that we're hoping to purchase, they do not have that kind of frame, and so that would be one nice upgrade that we would have. I understand the commission's concerns for purchasing these vehicles. We didn't purchase vehicles last, or we didn't purchase trucks last year, and if we weren't to purchase trucks this year, next year, we would just have requests for more trucks, and I don't think that it would be good to have that big of a impact on the budget in one year. It's nice to be able to spread them out, a couple of trucks every year. We do try to do a pretty good job of prioritizing a little bit of money towards our equipment, and the majority of our money towards our roads or our bridges. And so if anybody else has any questions, I can try to answer those two.
Questions? Commissioner Kelly.
Well, I'm confused at where we are. We're working, right now, we're on 14, is that correct?
We are on 15, yeah, 14, excuse me, yeah, we're on 14.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm writing notes all over the place, so sorry.
So we've deferred awarding the contract.
There hasn't been any notice to bidder yet. Items 14 and 15 go together, and I would assume it's.
Okay, that's where you lost me.
Okay.
I thought you said we have to know what we've bought, we have to read it, we have to pass it forward, read it. No, we have to know what we bought before we can specify the.
The truck.
The spreader, the combinations, right?
That's right, and so, and that's why I say that these two items go together. If we were to end up purchasing a different kind of truck chassis, that would change the kind of truck body that we would need to purchase, and that's why we go to the commission at the same time with them, to know full well that we're getting the truck chassis that we want, and can use the design that we've come up with for the truck body.
So my understanding that we now know the truck you're recommending.
These are the trucks that we're recommending.
And that's what the item we're on right now, and then if we pass that, then we will go on to 15 and order notice to bidders.
For the truck body, correct.
But if we deferred 14, then 15 goes away for a while, is that right?
Like I said, I think that they go together, kind of like Commissioner Heiburger said, if we wanted to do the notice to bidders now, and see if we wanted to purchase the truck bodies with the bids that we got, and then purchase the truck chassis, that would be one thing that the commission could do, but it's our recommendation to do both of them together with the lead times of the.
Okay, I'm not, I didn't, I failed mechanics, but the body is the.
The piece that sits on the drive unit, the back that has the.
And chassis is simply the bare.
The wheels.
The bare thing with a cap, is that right?
A cap.
And these are all diesels, is that correct?
Yes.
They're all diesels. Any more questions? I have a couple more questions. Why aren't we using a car wash on South Cliff if our guys don't have time to do it?
If you've ever driven past the South Cliff one, the line is usually out basically to Cliff Avenue, and so we do go to the city, maybe that's the one you were talking about, the city truck lot.
I was talking to the North Cliff one, but there's city one, too.
The private one, that has a line that could last over an hour, and with 18 trucks, that would take a long time. We do go down to the city of Sioux Falls, truck wash when it's open, it's not open very often, it's broken down a lot, I should say, but we do use that. It's most efficient for us to hand wash them with our hose.
How about putting new chassis on old trucks?
New chassis.
No, not new chassis, but new.
New bodies.
New bodies on old chassis.
The biggest problem that we're having, and we have done that, we purchased two salt sand spreaders last year at the end of the year, I think they were, or we purchased one of them at the end of the year for about $14,000 or something like that. And so that is a standard practice that we do. We try to get two bodies out of every single chassis if we can. Moving to the stainless steel bodies, I'm not sure if that's going to continue, we might start outlasting our chassis with our truck bodies, if that's not too confusing.
No, I'm totally confused.
Do you guys do any sandblasting and repainting of?
We have started that. We haven't done it with our dump trucks yet, because we don't have any that are in that time of their lifecycle, but we have done it with our front-end loader. Just recently, we've been trying to get quotes for our semi-trucks and side dump trailers, because we know that we're not going to be able to replace these vehicles at the rate that we used to. So we're looking into that more and more, we're starting to do some of it, trying to find contractors that are able to do it for a decent price, has been our biggest problem so far, but we have started some of it, and we're investigating more.
Okay. Any additional questions? I would still be in favor of last week's motion, which died, which was deferring this until after we know what the legislators are doing with road money.
Well, I hate to be an old replay, but I'm going to suggest that we wait again till after the legislature is finished, which is two months from now, and I would make that motion.
I have a motion to defer for two months until after legislative session. Is there a second? Oh, pass me down.
I will second it.
I have a motion and a second to defer for two months until after the legislative session with the purchase of these two trucks. Are there any other comments or questions?
Go ahead, Bill.
Commissioner Benega.
Well, I don't, I'm not interested at all in micromanaging your department, that's your responsibility, it's all about money. And frankly, it's more important for me to see a bridge repaired or replaced than it is to replace a truck. I think there's ways to get by with the truck for another year, if we need to, it wouldn't be ideal, but frankly, just because there's a policy that's black and white that says you can, doesn't mean that we have to, and I really feel the safety part of the bridges and highways is more important, so that's where I'm at. The $4 million, we can debate where that money goes and where it comes from, and all that kind of thing, no matter how we do look at it, it's still a shortage, and it's an issue where we have to prioritize line items in a budget, and this line item for this equipment is not as high a priority for me as it would be for others.
Commissioner Barth, you had a comment?
Yes, I probably am swimming upstream on this a bit, but, and I think you made some excellent points, Commissioner Benega, but I think that our department head here has made a reasonable case, and I anecdotally spoke with a member of the crew out there who I happened to encounter, and asked him if they needed new trucks, and he said yes. And I think that, you know, managing anything, you know, you're going to have, you know, a little too much here, a little less there. Managing is what a director of a department does, and, you know, it's just like cooking, you know, you might have turkey in the oven and potatoes boiling, but you have to manage all these things at the same time. And I support Superintendent Boothby's plan, but I have great respect for the voices for restraint, and finally, I would guess, just ask if we have iron planet, do we have rust planet, anyway.
Additional comments? Commissioner Kelly.
Well, I too hate to micromanage, because that's what we hired DJ for, and he does it, he does his, you know, he makes the good case, he does his research, but we, and we are not supposed to micromanage, I don't believe, at this table. However, we are policy centers, and it appears to me right now, and the commission hasn't necessarily sent you a priority or policy, that we want to work bridges rather than equipment, or that the equipment is, I don't think it's clear to anybody what we want, and because there is significant legislature going on right now, in fact, today, I believe, is a committee hearing on Senate Bill 1, so I guess for that reason, I would support the deferral until we know where that is, but I think it's also incumbent upon us to sit down and determine a policy, and probably, you know, if we do it before budget time, we then do it, and maybe we can get away from these, what appear to be serious micromanaging, and yet still have, where we think if, you know, there was a policy almost here that wasn't the commission's, but it was the highways, that bridges were secondary to everything else, including reserves. And I think we've changed that, and we've said we were concerned about the bridges. You know, what you did with the pavement selection deal and with that other map. what you did with the pavement selection deal and with that other map, I don't think we have one on bridges, do we, or, I mean, we've, we can look, but there's what, 200 bridges is it, or whatever the number is?
There's a third board there that is too small to read and we have that out there in the back, but after the meeting, I was hoping that anybody that's interested go over our selection process for our structures.
And I think we need that and then, you know, part of the SB One, if I understand it right, is that it's going to require the counties to have a plan and, you know, on roads and bridges, we should be looking out probably five to 10 years on equipment, we can establish something and perhaps there has to be some sort of advisory situation as Gerald has talked about, that we can look at this and then maybe leave you alone when you come up here instead of beating you up, but in the meantime, I think the deferral would be prudent until after the last day of the session.
Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Benega, did you have a comment?
I do, yeah. This is, this is an issue that frankly, being the new kid on the block, has been very, a little mystifying to me and I bring absolutely no truck experience to the table at all and these might be the first pictures of rusted hydraulic tanks I've ever seen in my life. So I really can't, I don't bring, and I respect the expertise that Commissioner Benega and Commissioner Heiburger bring on trucks. I would say that they're all different kinds of safety and as a mother of a teenager driving to school this morning, I'm very icy roads, I'm very appreciative of the county and the work that they do to keep those roads clear and safe for drivers of all ages and so, I mean, I view this as a safety issue as well. It was concerning to me last week when it was mentioned that there were four trucks down and, you know, that's got to affect the kind of service that we provide to our constituents. And I'm also concerned about micromanaging a budget that was approved, cut, from my understanding, but approved for equipment and, and I do understand, things change, budgets evolve as circumstances present themselves and I understand that the legislature is hoping to assist in this area. It's a little, I mean, I think that the legislature is trying to add, not change priorities that were set in a budget that's already been established, so that's a little bit concerning to me. I don't particularly have a huge issue deferring it for a couple of months to see what happens, I'm just not sure that that is a game changer to me for this particular issue.
Any other comments? Okay.
I might have a couple more comments, if possible. This morning I received a call at 6:24 from Rural Metro, our entire crew was out at 5:00 AM this morning. And Rural Metro called, they had a semi truck that had gone off the road due to ice on one of our routes and they had not seen our snowplow truck. It takes no more than two hours, more like an hour and a half to run an entire cycle on our, on our snowplow routes. They said that they had been out there for an hour and a half already and not knowing where we were at. And it's a direct result of having trucks down and not being able to provide the level of service that Commissioner Bender was talking about. I'm not trying to sway your vote, I just want you to know that it does affect our level of service. And furthermore, if we are looking at delaying this decision for a couple of months, I might suggest that possibly we delay it until January of 2016 for the actual purchase. That means that we could still do our bidding and our ordering in 2015, but not receive the product until 2016 because we wouldn't be able to put them in service anyway. That would allow us to actually defer this $400,000 from our equipment budget to a structure. And we have projects ready to go that aren't funded right now. And I think that might be more what the commission's flavor is for right now, if we want to spend money on bridges instead of equipment, we could immediately move to a bridge project and actually get something done rather than wait for a year and have trucks that we can't even use.
Commissioner Benega, yeah?
Well, ironically, this morning I took the interstate around town because I had to have, I had an appointment at the north end of town and at the bypass of 29 and Tunet 29 was a State Department of Transportation truck in the ditch. So your argument about the metro thing doesn't hold a lot of salt with me. The other issue is, is if we defer this till January of 2016, then we have a winter that we're going to be needing to address from god knows when, from October through December, before we make that conversation happen. So I think if we wait until after the legislative session, we'll have a better understanding and we can move this into the timeframe that it needs to be because with Commissioner Bender's concern about safety issues, we would be addressing this three months sooner, in theory, than we would by leaving it till 2016. I think her viewpoint is extremely important, but we don't live in an ideal world that we can get every place at the time that we want to get there. And unfortunately, we're dealt a hand where the state has limited our resources to the Consumer Price Index when our growth of public safety is double-digit. So that's as big a safety issue for me as it, as the roads and bridges and highways are by sticking people who don't belong on the streets, out on the streets because we're going to have to build a jail in the next few weeks.
We have a motion and a second to defer this for two months, is that two months? And I think we can make those decisions about further delaying it at that point. At this point, we are delaying it two months, that's the motion on the table. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Just one, it's kind of a question in a way, on the bridges, because we're talking about diverting money from, or allocating money here rather than there. Have we got bridges that are in dire need right now in the county? You said, I think, am I right, 199 bridges in Culver, is that what we're talking about?
199.
Okay.
Dire need for replacement, as in imminent failure, no. Dire need for replacement, yes. Dire need for maintenance, yes.
Okay, so load limits are kind of, well, I look at load limits, I know you don't, I mean, your emphasis is different, but either way, we're going to be ongoing for the next 20 to 40 years redoing bridges, rebuilding, because bridges come to an end of their useful life and repairing. And I guess that's where we need to see, you know, we need to make the decision of how we want to see funds allocated based on, based on the condition of the bridges, which at one time I thought we were getting in pretty good shape and then I read another, you know, another time I read that, you know, we're millions and millions of dollars short on bridges. And sometimes the argument doesn't make any sense to me because I hear conflicting things about how bad or how good we are. And that stuff, I guess I think we want to look at in the next two months while we've got some breathing room here. And so I guess I'm going to support the deferral and hope we can come to some resolution on this without putting you through this every time you want something.
Any other additional comments? I have a motion and a second on the table to defer for two months. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Item number 15.
Item 15 is to authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for two combination dump trucks, salt spreader, combination body units for the highway department deferred from February 2015. DJ.
Should we have, is there a motion to defer for two months? So moved.
And a motion and a second to defer the notice to bidders for two months. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. 16.
Item 16 is consider a resolution to set weight load limits on certain Minnehaha County Highway Bridges as recommended by the 2014 South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Inspection Report. DJ Boothie.
Commissioners, we completed our bi-annual inspections last fall and have been reviewing reports and receiving reports and modifying reports ever since. I had a meeting with staff and commission representative, I think in December, to discuss the early findings of our inspection cycle and provided a quick update there, but this is our official report to the commission on our 2014 bridge inspection cycle and the resulting load limits to be established. 2014 inspections were a little bit different, are a lot different than previous years because it included a load analysis for the specialized haul vehicle, which is what we've talked about, the SHV loads.
I'm sure, just for a moment, could we get a picture of the SHV vehicle up on the screen? I think the public, I certainly have not seen them around, but it's quite a different vehicle than we normally see. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Thank you, Trish.
So on the screen there are two construction dump trucks. These are classified as specialized haul vehicles and FHWA's definition of a SHV is a closely spaced, multi-axle, single-unit truck introduced by the trucking industry in the last decade. Examples of this would include dump trucks, construction vehicles, solid waste vehicles and other hauling trucks. Some SHVs are equipped with lift-drop axles and that might be most recognizable by the picture on the right there that has an axle in front of the rear, two axles that is up above the ground. When he becomes loaded, he would drop that down so it would ride on the road. Or on the back of a ready-mix truck that you might see around town here, they have an axle that will go off the back and that just allows them to legally carry a little bit more weight. So the 2014 inspections included load calculations on all of our structures for the SHV loads and we also did our regular load calculations for our structures too. So the Vayner and Associates completed the inspections this year again, they did that last year too. The report that we have includes recommendations for four new postings on county highways, one new posting on a township road. Because we did a load analysis on every single structure, we also found 10 structures that would require less restrictive postings on the township system and six structures that require a more restrictive posting on the township system. And those are for our regular loadings that you see that's signed for today, that we've discussed in the past. Now, the SHV bridge, the evaluation is a new evaluation that hasn't been completed before and the federal government, FHWA and the state government haven't given us direction yet on how to post these vehicles for load. They have only given us the load analysis method to this point. FHWA has given guidance that they defer to the states to develop signage process and signage to be used for posting SHV loads. So it's important to note that although these calculations have been performed and we know what the postings would be, we aren't going to be posting those until we receive the guidance from the State Department of Transportation on how to post them. There are 37 new postings in total for the SHV load. This might get a little bit confusing, but there are six new postings for the SHV on county highways. Four of the 37 postings, I'm sorry, four of the six postings on county highways are on bridges that are recommended for new postings above. Two of the six are on bridges that have existing postings. And then of the 37 proposed SHV loadings, there are 31 new postings on township roads. One of these is on a bridge recommended for a new posting. 20 of them are on bridges that already have existing postings for the existing loads and then 10 of them are on structures that don't have another posting, they're only going to be posted for the SHV load. And so we do have a resolution that is prepared, that has the posting recommendations for the 21 structures that are, as a result of the current bridge load capacity evaluations that we've completed, the four new ones on the county highways, the one new one on the township road, the 10 less restrictive on the township road and the six more restrictive on the township road. Now, it's important also to note that none of these postings are like what we've seen in the past with an immediate six-ton posting or an immediate three-ton gross posting. These are much more what I would maybe even call like an inventory type rating where a bridge, for example, might be currently posted at a 13, 22, 26 ton and it might be changing to a 13, 22, 25 ton. So there's only one vehicle classification that is being reduced by one ton. And so there's definitely a change with these 21 new postings, but the change is not nearly as drastic as what we saw two years ago with our, our bridge inspections. There is a map in, in your briefing memo that shows the locations of our proposed postings. That map is also shown on the screen there. And Commissioner Kelly talked a little bit a few minutes ago about the progress that we've made on our bridge network. We have been making a lot of progress and if you read through our long-range plan documents, it outlines our goals and our objectives for the progress in reducing our bridge postings. We've replaced, I think, four, our seven bridges last year and several other bridges the previous two years and I think most all of those were posted bridges. We've, like I said, we've made a ton of progress on our bridge postings. It's our goal to have little or no postings on our, on our bridge system. It's inevitable with the amount of maintenance that we need to do, that they're going to be there for a period of time. Some of these new postings on the county highway system are basically a result of when that bridge was constructed and that some of them aren't that old. They were constructed using a current, at the time, a design guide that only allowed for certain weights that are less than what the legal loads are today. And so they were designed for a lesser load than what we're allowing on the roads today. There's not an easy fix that we can just go out and make a repair, for example, and have those bridges postings removed. We are going to be looking at potential fixes, but it's very possible that those bridges will remain posted for their entire life. We will continue to maintain them and keep them in good shape, but there's four bridges out there that are in pretty good shape that are posted simply because of the design that was current at the time they were constructed. So with that, I do have the resolution in the file there, prepared for the 21 structures. We will have information from the state. They indicate likely in the late spring, early summer timeline for the SHV signage. At that time, we'll come back with a new, or another resolution for those postings. We do have intentions on scheduling an informational commission meeting on Tuesday, February 23rd, and that is going to focus on bridges. We have presentation already put together for that and that's just going to be a really good overview of our bridge system, how it's analyzed, how it's inspected, how projects are constructed and just a really good informational session for you guys to attend. And that's going to be eight o'clock in the morning before the commission meeting. So if anybody has any questions about the 2014 inspection cycle, our system in general, any one of the specific bridges, I can answer them now.
Questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Those SHVs look scary to me. They're-
They're, am I right that they basically allowed twice as many wheels and not told us what effect it's going to have? I can't imagine on a county road, or on a township road, gravel road, that that many wheels on the ground doesn't cause more damage than just a regular, or what was existing a few years ago. And it's going to require a special posting on almost every bridge, isn't that?
Well, not every bridge, but out of 199 or so, I think I said 37 of those will be posted for the SHV.
So you're going to have a fourth where they got the three axle or three deal now? There'll be a SHV limit, too, or?
It sounds like it's going to be a separate sign. It's going to be a whole new sign because there are different classifications of an SHV load, and so it's going to be complicated. And I think that's part of the reason why it's taking so long to develop that signage.
Any other questions? Commissioner?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution on setting weight-load limits as proposed by our highway superintendent.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 17, consider a motion to approve change order number one for a decrease in the amount of $155,473.90 to the contract with Asphalt Surfacing Company for MC 109-115-150 BM-14, Asphalt Overlay Project on County Highways 109, 115, and 150. DJ Bouvie.
Commissioners, I think Robert saved the best one for last, for the highway department, anyway. This was from our 2014 overlay contract. We had additional quantities in the contract that were not used. We did complete all of the miles that were planned for overlay. We just had additional quantities that were not needed to complete the work. That's the major part of the change order there. They are all identified, all the line items on that second page. The total amount is a deduct of $155,473.90. And this change order is necessary in accordance with our purchasing policy to complete the final payment.
Are there any questions?
Make a motion.
Commissioner Benega.
Just a quick question this time. What's the $6,300 for liquidated damages?
The contractor finished the project after the completion date. I think seven working days after the completion date was what was negotiated there. So in accordance with the DOT specifications and our specifications, there are due liquidated damages.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barth?
I'll make a motion to accept that change order.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to decrease the, a change order decrease of $1,550.473.90. I didn't say that right either. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 18 is an update and status report of the 90th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson again with the commission office. I've got a few bills that I'm going to touch on this morning, and obviously if there are others that you have questions on, please give me, let me know, and I'll do my best to answer them. The first bill that I just wanted to bring to your attention is it appears that the two alternative highway bills that were moving forward previously on sort of different tracks and level of funding, being HB 1131 and Senate Bill 1, Senate Bill 1 was hog-housed. And so those, that, the language and the dollar amounts in that bill, that was the bill that came out of the summer study that was closer to $100 million in overall road funding, has been hog-housed to reflect the funding in House Bill 1131, which is the administration's proposal and appears to be the bill that looks like it's going to have some traction moving down towards the end of the session. So that's, those obviously still have a ways to go, but just certainly to update you that that looks like the legislative feelings have coalesced to this point around that proposal, and there will be tweaks moving forward. Moving forward beyond that, I would look at House Bill 1215, and that is an act to provide for an optional enhancement permit to carry a concealed pistol. And I know this is one that the sheriff's office is working on. It has not had a hearing yet. It's scheduled for a hearing tomorrow, but it would provide a framework where that if an applicant goes through an enhanced background and training process, they would be eligible for a concealed weapons permit that would allow them, as I read it, to carry anywhere other than a liquor establishment. And again, I can't give you the specifics on that, that I know the sheriff's office is looking at this bill and offering input, and we will all see a lot more when that comes up for its first committee hearing in Senate State Affairs, excuse me, House State Affairs tomorrow. The other bill that I would mention to you, and this is the one that Mr. McFarland is up in here testifying on this morning, is House Bill 1216, an act to repeal the limitation on the total amount of revenue payable from taxes on real property for all taxing districts except the school district. This is essentially your property tax limitation freeze. And that, as we were meeting this morning, I got an email from Ken that this did pass out of committee 10 to 4. I would caution you that any legislation has still got a long road ahead of it after passing one committee, but that's good news, and certainly we'll continue to watch this and offer input, as he was up there and testifying on that bill this morning. I don't know, I know there was a call from the association to get turnout from other counties to also go up and speak on this. I don't know how much other testimony, how much other input they received, but I will follow up and can let you know on that.
Just a note on that, Robert, and Jeff was on the conference call yesterday, but it's an indication of how much respect they have for Ken because they felt nobody could speak to this better than him. I think during the conference call, I said that doesn't mean some people shouldn't be there. And there were a couple of commissioners, I believe, that were in here at the time that were going to try and get their plus staff, hopefully, but it speaks well of what, you know, how Ken can address these issues for us.
I would certainly echo that.
And getting it out of committee means he did a good job.
Absolutely. Again, Senate Bill 1 and House Bill 1131 merged, or hog-housed, we'll follow that. One other one that would also provide some interesting feedback, some assistance to counties, Senate Bill 81, an act to require persons convicted of driving a vehicle while under the influence of alcohol, drugs, or intoxicants to pay a certain cost to the county. And that would be a fee of $50 per offense deposited in the county's general fund upon conviction of drinking while intoxicated, conviction. And I know that one, that one has passed out of Senate local government, five, nothing. And I had some instructions from Ken to get your feedback input on this bill if you would like to authorize our office to write a letter or email, communicate support for this bill.
Comments?
Commissioner Heiberg?
Commissioner Barth?
I have a question for Kirsten here. Normally on a DWI, the fine money that we may be assessed against a perpetrator, whatever we want to call them, that goes to the--
School districts.
So we get Zippo from that, and this is the first shot we've had at, you know, getting a little bit of revenue.
First shot?
First shot, okay.
Attempt. How about that?
First draft? No. Anyway, I think it is a small amount, but it is an amount that we would get in changing the pattern. That's been where the schools get it.
And if I may add, the language of the proposed statute, as I understand it, unlike fines, make this non-wavable by the sentencing court. So it has to be assessed.
My concern with it would be that if the person already can't afford the fine, and then there's a warrant because they haven't paid the $50, now they're sitting in jail for $85 a day, and we still don't get our $50. That's my only concern.
Can't do the time, don't do the crime.
I agree with you, but it is a thought.
Well, and I totally agree with you, Commissioner Heiberg, as, you know, when we assemble at Wiley's or whatever we've got money, when we assemble in the court, we don't. I mean, they don't.
It'd be nice to see the money on the front end and not on the back end.
Yeah.
Other comments? Ken's looking for directions, so you better think about it and let Robert know your thoughts.
I support the idea, and I don't know if it requires us to vote on it, but I think anything which would bring us a nickel on any of this would be a great idea. If we'd like a resolution or something, I'd make a motion, but I don't know if that's necessary.
I'd take that motion.
Okay, that was a motion. That is a second.
I have a motion and a second.
If you make it, I'll still come in.
It is a motion and a second. Is it to send Ken a letter? Is it to, what is it?
Well, it should be on the floor today or tomorrow.
I think that, I think what he's looking for is direction to support this as a body.
Yeah, but, but, I mean, the timeframe is pretty critical. If it came out of committee yesterday, I can't remember whether it goes on one or two days later. 5-0, it could be on the consent calendar, but somebody would pull it off.
Well, and then you've certainly got just the process that that's one chamber. It's got, it would have an additional journey.
I know, but you fight every battle on its own, so.
Absolutely.
Can we say a motion and a second to support Senate Bill 81? Is there any other comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 19 is Minnehaha County Commissioner liaison reports.
For you then, Robert. Okay. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
I'm going to ask Scott Anderson to come up and--
Thank you once again, Scott Anderson of the Planning Department. And I just wanted to make you, as the commission and the public, aware, as you know, we have been working on a comprehensive plan. We have a task force put together called Envision 2035 Task Force. The plan is complete, and we are working now to get the word out that the task force would like to have one more public open house before it goes to the planning commission and this body for adoption, to show the public the work that we've done, to solicit any comments, any additions, concerns, corrections. And I wanted to make the announcement today of the meeting. We are having this public open house on March 24th at the West Central Middle School Commons area. We've had our meetings that, we've had an open house there before. It was very well attended, so we're hoping that we will also get more really good attendance. Our staff is going to be sending this information out to like township supervisors, township boards. We're going to be going out and putting them in post offices and convenience stores out in the county, trying to get the word out. Amber from CCOG has also sent out the notice that we will be having this public open house. We'll be making presentations in front of the TAC, the UDC, and the CAC, just trying to make sure the public is aware. This is also on our website. Every chapter is on the Envision 2035 tab underneath the county website. The public hearing notice is out. We've worked with Robert to prepare a press release, which has gone out to the media. If you can think of any other venues, locations, we've sent it to Sioux Falls Activities Events Calendar, have that posted. So we're trying to get the word out. Public participation, as you know, sometimes can be difficult. We wanted to have the meeting before planting season, so we wanted to hold it in March. Then after this, we would have another advertised public hearing before the planning commission on April 27th, which would be our regular Monday meeting in April. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, just some good news. I think we are close to having the document adopted, and once we go to that April 27th meeting in front of the planning commission, then we would schedule a hearing in front of this board and for adoption of the plan.
Questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Scott, I just, I hope that we'll, in that week before, because, you know, going to TAC and CCOG and all these places, but we're just preaching to the choir on a lot of that, we need to get the public involvement. And so I would hope that week before, we make a really intense effort of getting the word out to the public through press releases or whatever it takes to encourage them to be there. And then I hope when it's there, it's a good presentation that they, they get, we need that input. They can't make it seem like it's a cut-and-dry deal. If there's some serious issues in there, the people have got to be able to get them back to us.
I totally agree, and we're making every attempt to try and get the word out. And I feel that we have done a yeoman's task already, trying to get public participation. We've had at least four public open houses wanting information when we've been compiling the work. We were at the fair for, you know, two weeks, basically, the entire time of the fair, working with the public. So it hasn't been like we have, you know, put this document together just without public input and--
Well, what's the result of the four public open houses been? Has it been good?
I would say mixed. We've had--
50, 60 people or what?
Well, at the, at the public open house that we held in, at the West Central School, we probably had over 100 people there. The Dell Rapids meeting, we probably had 50 to 75 people there. We had probably, we had a meeting in Brandon at the, at the electric co-op facility there, that meeting room, and we probably had 35. Humboldt, we had fewer. I mean, we had probably, you know, 510 there, so.
We had one at Tri Valley, too.
And we did one at Tri Valley, that's right. And we had very good attendance at Tri Valley, too. So we have been soliciting input.
Okay, my only point is we need to really keep on it. We can't kind of just put it and then, you know, build it and they will come, because they won't.
Well--
And you have to make your own party successful.
Exactly. And that's why I'm hoping that the commission will also hand out some invitations to our party. So, and I will be coming, you're probably going to see this before the meetings in March, I'm going to be coming here a couple times, because this, I mean, our broadcast is replayed, people can hear this, and I just want to, we're giving it plenty of lead time so we can, you know, build up the opportunity, or we can make the opportunity to get the word out. And so that's why I appreciate letting you, letting me do this information today.
My suggestion was going to be that you do one in Brandon at the school, but if they only had 35 people, maybe they're not interested. I would, I don't know where you said that was at, but I would think the school would be more of a drawing place for people to go to than--
We met at the--
Electric Co-op or something.
On Rice Street, they have that public, that electric, the co-op building that they, they have a really nice meeting room there and are always very gracious about letting each student for free, so.
The school might be a better draw, just because people go there on a regular basis. I don't know. Maybe you wouldn't get anybody from Brandon if they didn't support it last time, but it's just a thought. You're on the other side of the county that way, and it opens it up to people over there. People from Sherman might not want to drive all the way to West Central, so.
Anything else?
Nope, thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Any other commission liaison reports? Commissioner Benega?
Just a quick note that this afternoon, the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee will be meeting at 1:30 to look at options from the architect or potential possibilities of jail additions, which obviously is a huge issue for conversation in the future.
I believe any commissioner that wants to attend can attend that. It's over in the sheriff's conference room.
It's over in the sheriff's conference room.
Any new business?
Move adjournment into--
Oh, no, we're not ready yet, Jeff. Sorry. We're on new business right now.
You should have noticed, Robert.
Robert.
And I would, I would just note that the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, we also posted both days of that on our public calendar this week, so to this afternoon and tomorrow as well. That's posted on our calendar. One thing our office has spoken to the commission about in the past is the proposed rule change for waters of the US within the definition of waters of the US within the Clean Water Act. And this is a proposal that's been brought forth by both the Army Corps of Engineers and the EPA. And there's been some level of concern or discussion as to what the, this new definition could mean regarding permitting and work, particularly on the county level, and some of the things that it would require both of our local government entities, but also people working privately or private businesses working on their own. And there was recently, on February 4th, there was a congressional hearing between, including both the Senate Environment and Public Works Committee and the House Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, where NACO, our national affiliate of our state association of counties, where the national, NACO folks testified regarding the proposed change in the definition. And the, the end result of that testimony was a desire or a call for the proposed rule to be withdrawn. And some of the specific concerns expressed was that it would, the definition change would include an inadequate consultation process with state and local governments, ambiguous and inconsistent terminology, and ongoing delays with the current permitting process. These were some of the reasons that were noted and highlighted in the NACO testimony. I've given you a brief outline, as I've seen from the publications that are forwarded by NACO. I know our highway department has had some more, some more direct contacts, I believe, with Senator Round's office, that either DJ or Shannon may be able to explain with much more specificity than I'm able to discuss.
I think in that article, it also said that they'd ask that they would bring other people to the table so that we could make this a more, at least include local government in their decision-making. That's what is ambiguous, so they weren't trying to totally shut it down, shut down the current resolution, but move forward with something.
And that's a good point, that it was not, at that hearing, it was not just the NACO lobbyists. They had, they brought in a number of attorneys general. There were a couple of commissioners from states around the, around the nation. I think there were some land supervisors. So there was a good mix that brought that forward to the, to that joint committee meeting.
Any other questions about that? Does anybody have any questions they want to ask? Okay, we'll leave it at that. Can talk to DJ if we need to. Is there any other new business? Is there any old business? Look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for contract litigation and personnel?
So move.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.